Hello and welcome to this information session on how to apply for Creative Ireland and Arts Grants and Bursaries from Kildare County Council in 2023. This presentation will be broken into two parts, the first to give an overview of the grants that we have available and the second part will give some useful tips on how to apply for the grants using our online system. All of the images that are on the slides here are projects that we have funded over the last number of years through the Arts Grants or through Creative Ireland Bursary Awards. Before I start to talk about grants, I just want to give a sense of the new arts strategy for Kildare County Council, which will be published in the next couple of months, and I hope that you can join us for the launch event, which we will advertise on our e-bulletin. We'll have an open invitation to that. And here we have the strategic priorities identified within the arts strategy. I also, while I have your attention, would like to let you know about Creative Places at Thaigh, which is a project that we received funding from the Arts Council for 2021, a very exciting three-year programme to bring opportunities to areas that haven't previously experienced significant support from the Arts Council, and we were delighted to receive funding from that. I'm not going to talk about the awards for Creative Places at Thaigh today, other than to say that over €52,000 was awarded in grants for that programme last year. If your project relates to the Creative Places at Thaigh municipal district area, just apply through the suite of grants that I'm going to speak about today, and with the Creative Places Coordinator, we will ascertain if your grant is more suitable for the Creative Places support. But immediately after our grants are closed, there will be an open deadline of next generation awards available from Creative Places at Thaigh. Something else I'd like to draw your attention to is Music Generation, which Kildare County Council, with our partners in Kildare WETB, were very involved with establishing, first of all, receiving funding from the National Music Generation Office after a bidding process, and we've successfully established Music Generation Kildare, which is housed with our partners in the ETB. But Kildare County Council have invested significant funding in this, in terms of funding and also resources to support it across the five municipal district areas. If your project that you're thinking about looking for funding for is music education related in a school or in a youth art setting, or if you're looking at instruments for a project in schools or youth settings, we probably will refer you to Music Generation in the first instance, so just bear that in mind. Something else I wanted to draw your attention to was the Local Live Performance Programming Scheme, which the Department of Tourism, Culture, Arts, Gaelic, Sports and Media introduced as a response to COVID-19 in 2021, and Kildare County Council received significant funding for this over the last year or so. And it was a stimulus project from the department acknowledging that the live performance sector had lost so much work over COVID-19, and that includes people both on the stage and behind the scenes, technical crew and production. So you can see from the slide here that significant employment opportunities and performance opportunities, both online and as we moved out of COVID, in person over the last year or so, but that was very much a stopgap around COVID, and that scheme has now stopped. So in terms of that live performance sector, a concern for us would be that maybe an expectation that that level of support could continue. We do hope that that sector has started to rebuild and that they are able to sustain themselves in a way that they were able to do pre-COVID, but we're going to keep an eye on that, but it is something that I just wanted to draw your attention to. Something else that I'd like to draw your attention to is the Basic Income Scheme for the Arts, which was another initiative from the department last year, and just to draw your attention to the fact that Kildare got the fourth highest allocation in the country, and that's after Dublin Cork and Galway, and it is reflective of the large number of artists living here, which we know, we don't necessarily know all of the artists that received this, but it's heartwarming to know that we have so many artists living in the county. The scheme is now closed, but I think it's just something that we'll bear in mind in the future. We'd love to hear the impact of what that means to artists, but certainly if you are a recipient of the Basic Income Scheme, that does not stop you in any way from applying for any of the application schemes that I'm going to speak about today. So getting on to the grants then, and these are all listed in alphabetical order. The first scheme is the Arts Act Grant Scheme, and we have awards of up to €2,500. The minimum tends to be about €400. It's a really, it's like a catch-all scheme, and it will appeal to artists and community groups. So artists tend to apply for things like professional development courses, maybe a masterclass or a series of workshops. We don't fund full-time courses like masters or PhDs, it's really more of a short-term course. We can also fund equipment, so maybe the purchase of something that's important for an artist's practice, and when I say artists, I mean artists across all art forms, or it may be development of work. So it might not end up in something that's actually finished, it can be towards a process that might lead to a theatre show, or it might lead to a series of paintings, or maybe a development of a musical suite, something like that. The community groups that tend to apply are amateur drama, musical societies, or else a group that are an organisation that want to engage an artist to work with them. So that's the first one, and it's the most competitive scheme as well. I should point out that not all artists that apply for this will receive funding, so it's very important to get a good quality application in. The second scheme is the Arts and Education Bursary Awards, and this award is set at €2,500, and the funding is intended for artist fees only. So if there's additional costs around materials or equipment, the school should cover the cost of that, and that should be accounted for in the application. It is very important in this award that the artist and the school come together and make the application together. We do not recommend artists for application forms, it's really up to the artist and the school to pair themselves up. However, we do have a list of artists that have been through the Teacher-Artist Partnership, which is a national programme, and artists have already received training from that, and we've developed a list from Kildare with the Kildare Education Centre, so that list of artists are available for your information if required. The Artistic Entrepreneur Bursary Award, in association with the local enterprise office, was established a number of years ago because we felt that sometimes something that has a more of a commercial element to it is something that we wouldn't normally fund through the Arts Act Grant Scheme. It could be somebody maybe working around design or product, or something that falls into the area of craft, or maybe a service, something that has some industrial element to it, but we were conscious that we didn't want to turn all of these down and to capture them in some way, so we set up this award. It's €1,500 in cash, and there is mentoring from the local enterprise office, and to date, all of the people who have applied for that have been referred to the local enterprise office because they're always interested in hearing about new business ideas as well. The Arts Health and Wellbeing Award is a relatively new initiative with awards of €4,000. Anyone who knows us will know that we're very committed to arts health and wellbeing in Kildare. These can be very personal projects, so maybe it's somebody dealing with a lived experience of illness or some sort of ability or disability, or it could be an artist reaching out to work with a community, and we would, it's up to you to decide what that would be. I would say though, looking at applications we received last year, some things that won't cover are wellbeing and yoga, for example. That's not to say we don't value them, it's just that there's a limit to our schemes, and maybe they'd be better funded elsewhere, so for example, maybe Healthy Ireland or the HSC may have funding towards that. Our Culture Night Commission Award is between €2,000 and €4,000. We did have a commission in previous years, but the deadline was later, so we have moved the deadline to earlier in the year to allow for people to plan for Culture Night, which must happen in September, and I have the date on a slide that's coming up. So if the project you have in mind isn't going to happen in September, there's no point in applying for this award. With all of these awards, it's very important to go to the individual application form and have a look at the terms and conditions associated with each one. The First Fortnight Award is another relatively new commission, and we have established this with Riverbank Arts Centre and with First Fortnight, the national organisation that hosts a festival, the First Fortnight, in January this year, and that's for work that we'd hope to be presented at First Fortnight in January 2024, so quite a long incubation period on that. Again, some of the projects we've funded have been very personal stories, and some of them have been very outward-facing in terms of engagement with a community, but they really need to be around mental health and they need to be presented. Some of them have happened in Riverbank Arts Centre, as they have a dedicated First Fortnight programme here, or they may also happen in other centres or communities throughout the county. It's always very important, if you have a location in mind, and sometimes they're very particular, that you need a particular location or venue for technical support or some aesthetic that you like, but it's very important to have buy-in and have a chat with that person or that organisation in advance. We do find that sometimes organisations or individuals put in an application and say that it's going to happen in a certain place, but we might just know that that's not the case, that we may be aware of something else that's happening there, so it's very important to phone them up and say, 'Look, I want to put your organisation's support and acknowledgement that this might happen in your venue, should the funding be successful', and also to have a chat about your shared values and how that might feed into the application. The next award, the Denis O'Driscoll Literary Bursary Award, it's two awards, one of €1,500, that's for an emerging writer, and the €2,000 is for a professional writer, and that's towards the development of a body of work. We were often asked about what do you mean by emerging and what do we mean by professional, but we would prefer not to define that for you, that you would decide for yourself whether you're emerging or whether you're professional. So just again, have a look at the criteria to see which you fit in and just how you define yourself in terms of your practice. Age is never an issue in relation to when you're emerging, we have a lot of artists maybe that either emerge or maybe have another life and then train in the arts at a later age, and certainly emerging doesn't always mean young, it certainly can, but we're certainly open to people coming to the arts at all stages of their career, and often I think a previous life and another existence can feed into a practice, which is always very interesting. The Drama League of Ireland Summer School is an award to the value of €650, to go to the Drama League of Ireland Summer School in the University of Limerick this summer, and it's on, the dates are specified, so if you're not able to go that week, then there's no point in applying for it, but we're very interested in building the capacity of groups, and actually, under the Arts Act Grant Scheme, the projects we're probably most interested is that capacity building piece, particularly if it's around the voluntary sector, drama groups, musical societies, and they tend to be the people that go to the Drama League of Ireland Summer School, so that's a week-long, intensive training, and I'm sure there's lots of networking as well that takes place, so that's that one. Now moving on to our next suite of grants, the Emerging Visual Artist Bursary Award, it's €2,500 plus support from Riverbank Arts Centre, marketing and technical support. So that is for an emerging artist, and again, as I mentioned earlier, we don't define what emerging is, but it's for an exhibition in Riverbank Arts Centre. It's probably for somebody who hasn't had a solo exhibition before, maybe somebody who's been part of a group exhibition, but something that we would see that this is a real stepping stone in terms of career, so that might be a good way to, you know, think about emerging, that something that would be a step up in terms of your practice. And certainly I know that the recipients of this award have always said that the supports that they've received from staff in Riverbank have been as important as the funding that was received. The Executive Coaching for Creative Professionals Awards, it's for a one-to-one training with Matthew Raleigh. Earlier in our slides, I mentioned about the executive, sorry, the Artistic Entrepreneurial Award that we awarded with Leo, and Matthew came to us a number of years ago with the proposal under that award for, that he would train as an executive coach, and he was successful in that application, and now we've re-engaged Matthew to do this one-to-one training with creative professionals. So it's nice to think that we can develop relationships with people over a long period of time. The type of people who've applied for this tend to be artists working as facilitators, maybe in different settings, maybe in a school, maybe in community settings, maybe they have their own practice as well, and maybe just need a little bit of time to reflect and think about their work, and maybe to look at priorities, and we've received really positive feedback from that. We're very keen on supporting artists to mind themselves, and we think that this is a really good opportunity to do that. The Local Publishing Awards to the value of €650. Again, I've mentioned some awards that we established them because we felt it didn't quite fit the criteria of other ones, so local publishing could be something of local interest, maybe local history, that maybe wouldn't have a high, in terms of not being written with a creative writing slant to it, maybe something of more local interest. But having said that, we also have funded a lot of local writing groups as well, so that's quite open as well, but the local interest, I suppose, would be a priority there, and something maybe specific to Kildare. The Platform for Recording Bursary Award, it's to the value of €900, and that's for three days of recording time in our studio in Leek Slip, or it can also happen using a remote recording unit. And we have funded choirs, big bands, and sometimes singer-songwriters, often spoken words. I was asked recently, could it be podcasts? Yes, it could, so the value is the three days recording, and the settings can happen in the studio, quite an intimate setting, or some of them have happened in schools or in churches, maybe just something that would accommodate a larger number. Next, the Research and Thinking Bursary Award, and that's to the value of €1,700 cash, and then there's €500 mentoring, and that's designed for a mentor and the executive coaching, as I mentioned above. So this is really more about developing an idea, so the research and thinking is to develop an artistic idea that you have. The €500 is towards a mentor to guide you in that, and the €1,700 is intended to buy your time, so maybe some artists, for example, might have some part-time work, so maybe to subsidise that to allow them to develop this big idea. And the mentor should be named in advance, and there should be a letter of support, and they should be linked to the research idea. The Tyrone Guthrie Residency Bursary Award, we have two awards of €800, and that is for two artists to go to the Tyrone Guthrie Centre in Monaghan, it's a residential workplace, and as well as the time and the space to make work, we know the networking, meeting other artists, maybe artists across art forms is a really key, important element of that. And then finally, we have the Youth Arts Residency Bursary Award. A little bit like the Arts and Education Award, it is intended that an artist and a youth group would come together and complete an application together. So it's not for schools, but it could be a frugal or a youth group, or maybe it could be a big organisation that have a youth cohort, and the artist and the youth group should work together to put in that application, and it would be great to get the voice of young people in that. Next, we have the Short Grass Film Commission. The first award is €1,500, and they're for filmmakers from the county to develop an idea around film. Not all cases result in a film straight away, it's often development of a project idea, it could be a specific thing around editing or colouring a programme or development of a script, but in many cases, it does lead to films. And yeah, that one is for the filmmakers from Kildare, and then the second one, the Short Grass Film Commission, which is €12,500, is intended for filmmakers who may be from Kildare, but it's also open to filmmakers outside of the county to come and film in the county. The main thing about that is that we want filmmakers to come to the county to make film and to use the many locations that we have. There's often benefits to the local economy in terms of the catering, and then maybe local extras, and maybe film crew, and maybe some actors, but like I said, the main emphasis is really about locations and using Kildare as a film destination. Moving on then to the Kildare Creative Ireland Programme, so this is a national initiative, and it is separate from the Arts Grants, but I just wanted to draw your attention to it today because a lot of the awards may appeal to artists, and they're also found, all of these grants are all available on the submit.com submission, the online portal that I'm going to speak about shortly. So the Bursary Awards are between €3,000 up to €10,000. The projects here are very public-facing and collaborative, so if your project is to, that you're interested in writing a novel, sitting at home by yourself, this probably is not the award for you. This needs to be something where you're going to reach out to community groups to do something. Themes that we're interested in are wellbeing, local history, diversity, sense of place around Kildare, climate, so it's a broader scope than what we have under the Arts Act, but I think the key thing about this is collaboration and that other partners would get involved as well. Just to use the example here of the image on the left, we have portraits of women who are part of Kildare Women's Sheds around the county, and that was led by artist Clara Murphy. So that's the Bursary Award, and then we have the Cronune and Oak Bursary Award as well, and they're awards of up to €5,000, and they must take place on Saturday the 10th of June this year, which is Cronune and Oak, that's the day that's designated, and it's an all-Ireland celebration of creativity in children and young people, and the project should include the voice of the child or the young person in the application. Again, the lead-in time for this is quite long because we'd hoped that some of these projects would have a developmental phase that are then showcased on the 10th of June, or they may just happen on the 10th of June, but I think richer projects probably would have a longer lead-in time, and there would be some element of showcase on the 10th of June. I mentioned earlier about the Culture Night Commission, so Culture Night this year is on the 22nd of September, and we're very interested in hearing from you if you have some public-facing art projects happening across the county. So if you have a project in mind, you may like to, you should identify your host partner, so for example, the image on the right here took place in the Bogavallan Nature Centre, and we had a series of films that were produced over some digital storytelling courses with Michael Fortune that we ran over lockdown. So but we're open to all sorts of ideas, really looking for projects all across the county. To say as well, every year we have a small stipend for smaller community projects to take part in Culture Night, and that will still happen, we're just conscious of getting the commissions out to the public as soon as we can to allow for that gestation period of ideas. So this is a scheme that we're actually not administering, but I just wanted to let you know about this because there is some overlap here, and so there's community grants that our colleagues in the Community Department have just announced, and the closing date for these are the 10th of March. There's community grants and festival grants, and also residents' association grants, so I'm not really going to talk about these, other than to point them out to you, that they're something that you might be interested applying for, and if the project you're thinking of applying to us to looks like a festival grant, or you feel it's more of a community festival grant or community grant, then maybe look at these as well, and they will also be hosting information sessions, both online and in person. All of the details are on the County Council's website under the Community section. This slide here is really just to give an overview, as I said, we're writing a new arts strategy, or we have it written now, and we took the time when we were writing that to go back and look over the funding that we've awarded in the last five years. So you can see from the schemes that I've mentioned here that we've given over €500,000 in five years. This isn't all of the grants that we gave, we do get involved with other projects, but just to give you a sense of what that looks like over a longer period. Something that's very important, for many years, the deadline for the grants was in March, but we have pulled the deadline back to an earlier date of the 28th of February. And the reason we did this was feedback from you said that you wanted longer time, if your project was going to happen within the calendar year, you wanted to know about it as soon as possible, so we've pulled the deadline a few weeks earlier, so please bear that in mind if you know anybody who's interested in applying, please let them know, because once the deadline closes, we start the second part of the assessment, that is another machine that we can't stop, so you really need to get your application in on time. So that was the first part of the presentation, and the second part is around the online system. So kildarecoco submits dot com is where all of the forms are found, and I'd say if you're interested in applying, if you can please go in and have a look around it as soon as possible, just to figure it out, that's really, really important. So to get into the system, there's lists of forms, lots and lots of them, I mentioned our colleagues in the Community Department, they have other forms up there as well, but you can filter using the column on the left-hand side, and you can see some of the, a screenshot of some of the awards that are available there, but there is a 1234 arrow across, you can move across to find the form that you want. Our colleagues in the Community Department have a video made on how to use the online system, they did it very well, so we decided not to do another one, so you might like to go over to the Community section and have a look at a short video on how to use the online system, which is pretty, it's almost the same as what we're asking you to do. So how are you, just some notes on how to apply, it's really important to just read the call-out and the eligibility notes and to choose the right application form, because if you fill out the wrong one, you really need to start from scratch again, you can't really pull the information across to another application form, so make sure you've had the right one, you've read the eligibility notes, and you know that you're eligible to apply for this. If you haven't used the system before, you will be asked to register, and you'll need to set up a new profile. If you are an independent artist, you may be asked for some details that you feel aren't relevant about your group, but you can just write something in that to just say not applicable, and you will be also asked for a PPN number. If you are a group, you should apply to our colleagues in the Community Department to register for the Public Participation Network, it's a very valuable resource. However, if that doesn't apply to you, that's okay as well. Also, we do get applications from artists outside of the county, and you will be asked to select your municipal district area. If you feel that's not applicable to you living outside the county, just click the municipal district of where you think the activity will happen in the county. So then get cracking on the application form, you can save it as a draft and close it and come back to it again, and if you have applied in previous years, all of your applications will be sitting there unless you have deleted them. Something I can't emphasise enough is to upload supporting material, and really, this requires as much thought as the application form itself, and that's relevant support material, something that's edited to suit the application form, because sometimes we find somebody puts in so much information that it's really hard to find the reference point within that, and I think selected works, we often get links to a website, and websites, you can get, it can just be very difficult to find what exactly is we're supposed to see, so I'd be very mindful of handpicking relevant, up-to-date support material. And again, if you have maybe gaps, if you're going to include a CV, if there's large gaps in your CV, I think it's absolutely okay to just say rearing a family, travelling, whatever it was you're doing, but I think gaps in a CV sometimes maybe raise some questions, so it's good to just give a full account, you don't have to give lots and lots of details, but maybe something that'll just join the dots on where you are. And as well, don't be shy about saying about other achievements you have, so if you've recently received funding from another local authority or from the Arts Council or some other organisation, let us know that, because that's validation from another source, and that should really support your application. So when you've that all done, you can send in your application form. I should just mention as well, it's really important to have a detailed budget with a breakdown of what you're actually applying for, and you can apply for your time, that is okay to say that you want to just buy some time for yourself as an artist, but that's up to you how that's broken down. So yeah, so getting back to this then, so send your application form, once it's sent, you will need to verify your email address, and you just need to check your spam. And you just need to check your spam folders, there isn't a slight glitch on the system. I think Gmail accounts particularly seem to be quite sensitive to the submit.com system. So if you've been in communication with us around grants, you might just want to keep an eye on your junk folders and then you submit your application. So some frequently asked questions, can you apply for more than one grant? Absolutely you can. And will you be penalised? No, but I would say it is quite time-consuming to apply for grants. So have a good read of the application forms and the criteria first. And I would suggest maybe handpicking ones that you feel are most relevant to you. And can we advise on which grant to apply for? I'd say not really, we did have four live information sessions and I have this one here today. And again, we will push you to go back and just read the criteria and that you need to decide that for yourself. Can we recommend artists for you to work with? No, we can't. We do need to keep a distance from the process, so we don't recommend artists. Other than I mentioned earlier, we could provide you with a list of artists that run the registration, the Register of Teacher-Artist Partnership graduates, I suppose. Does a project need to be completed this year? Not necessarily, we certainly would like the project to have started this year. And if you said it would be completed this year, then it should. If it's not, you need to let us know because we are open to audit and accounting for where the projects were at. And the projects, applicants from living outside the county can apply. They're often artists that were from County Kildare, but sometimes artists from outside of the county come in and work here. So you certainly can apply. If you're not from the county, or even if you've been living away for a long time and you're applying for funding here rather than the county where you're living or through some other grants, questions will be asked as to why you're not applying to the county that you're living in or some other funding source. So it's up to you to specify or explain that in your application. Here I have a definition of the arts, just in terms of what it is we can fund under the Arts Grants. And these refer to all of the Suite of Arts Grants rather than the Creative Ireland Grants. So any creative or interpretive expression, whether traditional or contemporary, in whatever form, and includes in particular visual arts, theatre, literature, music, dance, opera, film, circus and architecture. And includes any medium when used for those purposes. And that's the definition under the Arts Act two thousand and three. So that's the definition that we always work to. If you're looking at the Creative Ireland Strategy, the definition of creativity is considered as a set of innate abilities and learned skills, the capacity of individuals and organisations to transcend accepted ideas and norms and by drawing on imagination to create new ideas that bring additional value to human activity. And that's the definition that Creative Ireland have agreed last year. So I'd really hone in there on drawing on the imagination and to look at new ideas to add value to human activity. And just want to draw your attention as well to the Decade of Commemorations. We're currently waiting on an announcement from the National Office about a funding award. For the last number of years, we have received funding from the department for a decade of commemorations, Artistic and Creative Ireland Awards. We hope to have details of that soon. And I would recommend that you sign up for our e-bulletin to find out some details about that. It will be widely advertised when we have more details. So just to say that we really recommend applications from the diversity of all of the people living in the county as I set out here, and certainly you're interested to hear from artists whose first language is not English or anybody who may not feel comfortable if there's a literacy issue with an application form, please let us know. If you give us some time, you know, ideally not on the day of the deadline, but we can organise assistance in filling out forms. But we really, really want the projects that we fund to represent the citizens and the people who live in County Kildare. So things to consider, the who, what, when, where, why is really important. And that might sound very obvious, but just to do a little check, maybe if you've done a draft of your form and see, have I answered all of these? And also have you broken down a budget? And that it's just very clear. I would strongly suggest that you maybe get somebody who doesn't know you or doesn't know the project to have a read. Maybe somebody who's used to filling out forms that might have a neutral view of it as well. I think that's really important. On all of our forms, you will be asked about climate change and climate action. It may not be relevant to your project, but you are asked. And it's something I think that we all should consider, that might be themes that you use, that you explore. It could be materials that you use, it could be something, maybe your choices around travel, your choices around equipment, around sustainable materials. And it may not be applicable to your project, but it's something we are asking everybody to consider. And certainly around inclusion, equality and cultural diversity, we're asking everybody to just check themselves around that. I mentioned earlier about the benefit to the county. I think it's really important to just consider, why do you think it should be awarded public money for this? We can't give funding to everybody. And we just need to be very mindful of value for the public purse. So it's up to you to demonstrate why you think it should be awarded that money and to put some thought into that. We do have a commitment to the paying the artist policy that the Arts Council have. And you can have a look at that on the Arts Council website. We never ask artists to work for free. And we are conscious that post-COVID, a lot of artists did a lot of work voluntarily, did a lot of work online for free. And we really want artists to maybe regroup on that as well themselves and that they would insist that they would get paid for the work that they do. I mentioned earlier about support material to enhance your application. And if your application involves another individual or another organisation, you really should have a letter of support. It doesn't have to be very elaborate, unheaded, no paper or anything. It could just be an email saying, yes, I'm excited about this, we've got shared interests in X, Y, Z and I'm happy to support it should you be, should you be successful in funding. Something that shows that there has been a two-way or maybe a three-way conversation is very important and should enrich your application. So what happens when your application is received? Like I said already, it's a bit of a machine. Once the applications come in, we start with the next stage of the process. We're keen to let people know as soon as we can. We have, with the online system, it closes at five PM on the twenty-eighth of February and we don't accept late applications. Who assesses the grant? So we have external assessors. So we have an external arts officer and Creative Ireland coordinator and independent artists for the Arts Act and the Creative Ireland schemes. And then we have a suite of other external panellists who assess the rest of the grants. The arts team tend to stand back from the assessment process and allow the independent assessors to make those decisions. So once those decisions are made, it should be around mid-March. If you phone or email us, we should be able to tell you if a decision has been made and if you've been successful or unsuccessful. And if it's successful, we will be in touch. But either way, you will receive formal notification again through the submit.com, probably towards the end of March. And then we'll ask you for your bank account details. We do have to look for the header from your bank statement and relevant details like that. If you're not already on our system, but it's very important that you get that information to us. But we don't ask you for your bank details when you apply. In some other departments in the council they do, but we don't. So please don't send your bank information now. And you may not be successful in receiving a grant. So again, I wouldn't go and set up a bank account in anticipation of getting a grant. You might want to wait until you hear from us, particularly if it's around maybe a small community group that you feel you need to have a bank account. And can you get feedback if you're unsuccessful? You can. We're a small team here, so you probably need to bear with us on that feedback. But we're happy to give feedback that we would hope would help you to develop maybe better application forms in future schemes with us or elsewhere. So just to take a long-term view, I have the council logo here on this slide. And it's always nice to get acknowledgement, it is a criteria on all of our grants that we must be acknowledged. And certainly it's nice to do so, whether it's in writing, on invitations or programmes. And then that the arts team and the councillors in your area or across the county are invited so they can see the good work that's happening. And just keep in touch, we have an e-bulletin. As I mentioned, we'd love to let everybody else know about the work that you do. For yourself, I think it's really important to document your work so that you can use this information again. You know, think about the next application form and not just with Kildare County Council, it could be with some other organisation. So think document as you go, rather than afterwards thinking, oh, it's a pity we didn't get some funding or some good photographs or didn't keep those press releases about that. And so I mentioned earlier with the Public Participation Network, there's a whole suite of supports and information of things happening around the county other than the art service. So it strongly suggests that you register with that. All community groups in the county should be registered. And get to know us, register for our e-bulletin, link in on our social media and come to our public events. And so I have a list there of all of our social media. We're Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, where you're watching this video, our website and our email address. And thearts@kildareco.co is the best way to contact all of the arts team.